But we will now start the planning board meeting for January 19th for the town of East Fishkill. I will start by calling out the role and if the members would please reply present, I think that'd be the easiest way to do it. Lori G.
Present.
John Cutler.
Present.
Ed Miyoshi.
Present.
Christopher Lewis.
Present.
And Richard Campbell.
Present.
And John Ikeman, present. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Justice.
Thank you very much. I want to start by acknowledging the resignation of two of our board members who had spent many, many years serving the town of East Fishkill. Craig Smith had been serving since 2013 and Jason Pereski was serving for almost 20 years. He'd been here since 2002. They've left for very positive reasons related to career and to other board opportunities. And so we will miss them and thank them for their service. We do have a new member who is joining us tonight and that's Sarah Bloodso. So welcome, Sarah.
Thank you.
Sarah is going to be listening in tonight. She's actually not planning to vote since she hasn't actually heard any of the matters that are coming before us. But we welcome your participation. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Upcoming meeting dates are February 16th, 2021, and March 9th, 2021.
The company will look like?
I thought I heard somebody speaking. I'll continue. The minutes for November 17th, 2020, I have not had an opportunity to review those, so I'd like to hold those over until the next meeting. So we'll start with Grape Hollow subdivision. Michelle, can you give us a little rundown on Grape Hollow?
Yes, sure. Just a moment. I'm just actually trying to help somebody else get in. There's somebody that can see us but can't, can see us but can't hear us. So is there anybody, Michael, that you can see in the waiting room?
There's no waiting room for this.
No, there's no one else sitting there? Okay. Okay, so Grape Hollow was a subdivision that was was approved back in 2011 and they've received multiple extensions. You know, related to, I think largely the economy initially and then over the years, they've they've had some issues. I think they've been also trying to pull together their Department of Health's middle. And then at one point, probably three or four years ago now, we could ask them, they'd come back for an extension and we'd ask them to take a look at all the previous, all the laws that may have been changed, all the zoning that may have been changed since they had originally received the approval. And they did that. They took their application and they compared it against all the new zoning that have been passed and nothing had changed significantly. And then their application expired and due to COVID and the fact that, you know, there's a lot of, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt Scott. Brian and Pizza Terra are not on.
Okay.
Scott wants us to get them on before we continue.
Okay.
Wants to make sure.
I can see both of them on. Michael, are you able to unmute them? Let's see if I can.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there's.
We can hear you, yeah.
Right, but you don't like seeing me, right?
No.
Well, I guess it doesn't matter as long as you can hear me. I can see you guys. Oh my God, there we are.
Okay, now Scott's the only one left. Hold on. All right, hold on.
He looks like he's unmuted now, but we still can't see him.
He says he's talking. Yeah, tell him to unmute. Oh.
Scott, I sent you another link. So if you check your email, you'll be able to get in that way.
Okay.
Looks like Scott's on his way.
Okay. Michael, he said he didn't get the link from you yet.
Should we move on to another agenda item? Is there, is that a possibility or would Scott like to be a part of all the agenda items?
I think he wanted to be a part of it. So let's give him a few more minutes.
Okay.
That's weird because I see his name across the top when I scroll over, but I'm not sure why he's not here.
Okay. John, he said to go ahead with Grape Hollow. He'll keep trying.
Okay, gotcha. All right, Michelle, back to you.
So the applicant is basically requesting that we can consider another six month extension. And they're requesting the planning board to vote on that this evening, which would take us through July, basically July 19.
Okay, great. So we do have a resolution for that and I had asked Lori if she'd offer that resolution. Lori G.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have any discussion or questions?
Well, I'm sorry. So we can certainly, yes, open for discussion. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, so Michelle, and I'm sorry, you said it and I missed the date. When, when did they actually do the update on the, for all the laws?
So I believe that was back in, hold on, I can just pull up the agenda. I believe that was back in 2017, actually. Hold on one second. Let me just make sure I'm getting the date.
Four years.
I did six resolutions today, so I'm just not remembering off the top of my head here. One second.
I guess really what I want to make sure is we don't think that there's anything that's changed since that time that would have changed the subdivision before we approve it.
Um, no, no, I mean, the most significant thing that changed was they actually, after they originally received approval back in 2011, they actually lost a lot. There were 11 lots that were approved initially because of some of the agency comments, I think from DEC. So they got their original resolution change or revision was that they lost a lot. And then since that point in time, there's been no significant changes that would affect the that would affect their approval.
Okay. And then this is going to extend them past where everybody else has extended to, right, due to COVID-19? This puts them out a couple of extra months?
Yes.
Okay.
Although it's possible we may, we may have to consider extending the COVID-19 omnibus resolution that we did.
Right. Well, that's why I'm wondering because it seems like it's specifically carving out no further extensions granted, but would we allow them if if we're extending through COVID? I'm just wondering if we should bring them to the same date as everybody else or if this is really it and they won't be, they'll be excluded from any additional omnibus resolution. That's kind of what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I think, I think in this particular case, it's because we've extended them and and sort of declared it to be the final extension a couple of times and there's been extenuating circumstances. So in this particular case, I think we were, we were wanting to grant them six months and then have it that yet. But I mean, it's up to, it's really up to you as a board to determine whether or not you'd want to consider that.
Well, this sounds like a, like a policy decision that relates to a very special circumstance that I think we're taking our lead from staff and then your recommendation as to where we should go with it. What you would suggest is, is that when it does expire, that they would have to come back in for a new approval, I take.
Correct. Well, I mean, at this point with the, the issue is that they've got a bunch of agency approvals, including DEC, some wetland stuff. And some of those approvals are getting close to expiring as well. So at that point, we really can't extend them much farther without them having to do significant reapplication for permits as well.
Oh, their flood's probably even up, right?
Correct.
Like coming up on 10 years.
Their delineation, their DEC, and I think their Army Corps and, you know, they still have Health Department things they have to work through.
Okay.
Now, does any of that have effect with COVID, like any of those prior approvals from the other agencies?
Um, well, what, it would affect them getting them now, but they've had those permits in place for sometimes upwards of 10 years. In some cases, some like the delineations are good for 10 years. So it would affect them if they were actually trying to go now potentially because they're probably, you know, working at partial staff. But, but that's not the case in this.
And they're not granting any extensions themselves due to COVID?
Um, not that I know of right now. Not that I know of right now. It's possible that they, that they will, you know, in particular cases, but I don't, I don't know. I don't know. Michael, are you aware of any, Michael Cunningham, of any extensions that any of the agencies have granted as a result of COVID for permitting?
Not that I know for sure, but I know that there's been a general leniency going on between agencies with applicants. And I know the applicant's engineer actually raised his hand to speak if the board would like to hear him.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, he's coming in.
He's muted.
All right, Michael, you can unmute yourself.
Oh, folks.
Good evening, Michael.
Good evening, good evening. Yeah, thanks. I've been listening, you know, to the dialogue up to this point. One of the things relative to this project, it has been around for some time, but we are actively pursuing re-upping whatever pools may have lapsed and so forth. I mean, like the delineation of the wetland, we've actually got that re-upped and so forth. Certainly we'll take what we can get tonight because officially with the lapse in approval, we're kind of behind the eight wall. But I think the applicant, who I thought was also supposed to be on this call, is ready to move forward, get this map filed, get the road going and so forth. So we expect to have everything up to snuff in a soon, you know, in a short period of time. And largely that has to do with what's going on out there with the economy and so forth in the area. So I think he's ready to go.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Aside from the floodplain, is there any other specific permits that are expired right now that you need? Or are you, are you just in the process of renewing ones that might expire before July?
Wetland buffer has been updated, so that's, that hasn't changed. That's DEC. The Speedy's permit is currently active and that we haven't, we haven't, you know, discontinued that. So it's, that's, that's an effect. There is a buffer, wetland buffer approval that was also obtained, which we have not hit the expiration on date. I think we have another year or two on that. DEP, we are on the southern edge of the town there and we are in the Environmental Protection watershed area. So the stormwater and SDS there is I had to verify that nothing had changed out there via site visit. That's, that's been done. And Health Department, we had gotten to the point that they had issued a letter back, back in 2011 indicating that all the technical guidelines of the Met kind of come in with a map and we'll sign it. That never happened because obviously things got held up. So none of their regulations have modified either. So again, I'm fairly confident that we should be able to move through those and get things updated within, you know, the timeframe.
So Michael, the, the letter that I, that you submitted has that your freshwater wetland validation expires at the end of 2021. Are you relatively confident that by the end of 2021, you'll have will be on the way because the actual well and validation expires and then the permit expires on November 5th, 2022?
Right. The wetland delineation has been, the line has been re-delineated by DEC and nothing has changed. I thought I provided a copy of that email as part of the application we made.
Okay, I'm looking at the letter from them and the letter, it doesn't state, I see there's an email in here, it just doesn't give the exact, it just says that it looks like calls for the extension of the wetland line through 7/25/21. 2021.
Well, again, long story short, we, it's going to be an active construction site for a period way past that. So we wanted to make sure that was, that was tightened up. So we have that extension and, you know, we should be good for another, I believe it's five years. I think they cut that back in terms of the timeframe, so.
Okay, so you're, so you're good then theoretically through 2026?
Right.
So what's the pleasure of the board? I, I might suggest in light of COVID and Michelle, I appreciate your thoughts on this. In light of COVID, I might suggest that we consider putting them in the COVID extensions to the COVID extension date. And then leave it open as to where we go from that point forward. Is that something that makes, makes sense or not?
How much time does that give Mike? That's what, the end of May? I say it's got three or four months. What does that do for you, Michael?
Well, I think, you know, we'll take, again, anything we can get, but I think the, what you were considering tonight brought us to July, which would be further than even COVID is allowing. So I mean, that, that would, you know, in a perfect world, we'd like to move on that if it's possible.
Mike, I'm thinking though, like John said, if we, if we took this action tonight, the way it's currently presented, then if the omnibus resolution goes past July, you wouldn't benefit from that. So I wonder if we couldn't just change the language to say the later of July 19th or any extension of the omnibus resolution due to COVID or something like that. I don't know, Michelle, just that, that makes sure that they get the same benefit of it as everybody else will.
Sure.
We'd appreciate that flexibility.
You're here and it's the last one, right? I mean, that it wouldn't come back individually again unless it's a new app.
Well, I think the client, my client, who is actively looking to pursue the project, which means finalizing everything, filing a map and getting a road built. So that, you know, he's been pretty clear about that to me, so.
Okay. I don't know, does that make sense? I feel like I don't want them to lose out if there's more of additional COVID extension.
I would agree. I think, I think in light of this, you know, this is such a special situation with this pandemic that we need to recognize that. So can I have a motion on this? Lori?
Yeah, resolution or motion? I'm good with either.
I I, did we?
So we have, I prepared a resolution to extend just so we can memorialize it and actually, normally, you're right, John, do these via, via motion. But in this particular case, I prepared a resolution since we had had a resolution for the COVID extension. So I think what we need to do is just read the resolution and then just change that one whereas clause that will extend the, the date through either July 2021 or to follow the same day.
Okay, well, I think she just froze.
Yeah.
Okay, there she is. There she is.
So can you repeat that, Michelle? Either through July 19th, 2021 or?
Or as Lori suggested and say through, through a date.
Any subsequent COVID extensions.
Correct, correct.
Okay. So Lori, would you, would you care to read the resolution with that amendment included in there under the fourth whereas?
Yes, sir. Okay, I think I got it. Well, we can, we can word smith and Michelle if we have to. So resolution extending final subdivision approval for Grape Hollow subdivision applicants David and Donna Zublin on Grape Hollow Road with grid number 655601169932 offered by planning board member Lori G. Whereas the Grape Hollow subdivision was granted final approval for an 11 lot subdivision on July 19th, 2011. And whereas the resolution of approval was amended on December 4th, 2012 to remove one lot per agency approvals. And whereas a one-year extension was granted on November 19th, 2013, November 18th, 2014, December, sorry, October 6th, 2015, and a six-month extension was granted October 4th, 2016, followed by one year, a one-year extension on April 18th, 2017 and April 18th, sorry, April 17th, 2018. Whereas due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we are extending the approval for an additional six months through July 19th, 2021 or through any subsequent COVID omnibus extensions, whichever is later. And whereas, as a result of the extensive amount of time between the original approval and now, no further extensions will be granted. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby extends final subdivision approval for the above project as represented on a map entitled Grape Hollow subdivision prepared by M. Gillespie and Associates Consulting Engineers, PLLC, dated November 30th, 2005 and revised through January 18th, 2011. And are there any other? Michelle, do we need an updated map with the new flood delineation dates or anything like that? If the lines didn't change, I don't know if that has to be updated.
We'll have to, if the delineation has changed at all, but I believe that, Michael, did they tell you if they changed the line? I think they said they didn't, if I remember correctly. They're still on, hold on one second. Let me just look at the.
Were you, were you asking me?
Yeah, I'm looking right now at the, the correspond. No, it says the wetland boundary does not appear to have changed.
Right. Yeah, we have maps up there right now for re-signature. Again, that'll, that'll keep us good for another five years, so.
Is there a revision date on the map that you submitted to DEC?
There probably is. So we're all going to need to submit final plans and my LRS and things such as that. So that, you know, you can put today's date, if you want to, you know, demarket with something. But yeah, there probably was a revision date, sending it up to them with no plan changes, but just, you know, just, you know, re, re-smit plan, you know? I mean, I think as long as the plan set bears the signature block from DEC and it's valid, I would think that's typically usually enough, right?
Well, I mean, I think what we're trying to do is figure out what, what subdivision plan we're extending right now. And I don't, I don't have, I think the latest plan that we have is dated 2011.
Right.
Michelle, you can date it that date and they're going to have to come back eventually anyway, so it's no problem.
Okay.
Good to continue?
Please.
Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay, and is there a second by planning board member?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. So votes, board member Lori G.
Hi.
Board member John Cutler.
Hi.
Ed Miyoshi.
Hi.
Christopher Tomagunis.
Hi.
Richard Campbell.
Hi.
John Ikeman, I'm I. So it passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
So the next item up for discussion is Tucker subdivision. Could you give us an overview on that?
Michael, I mean, John.
Yes.
I think we're gonna, Michelle?
Yes.
We're gonna go to Stone Ridge?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so for anybody who has, has tuned into this video conference wanting to discuss Stone Ridge Commons, the applicant has withdrawn it from the agenda for tonight. So we are adjourning the public hearing to a date to be determined. And so anybody who is here, we won't be discussing it, but we'll be discussing it at a future date and keep an eye on agendas for future meetings. Very likely it will be the February meeting, but possibly the meeting after that. Anything to add to that, Michelle?
Well, if it's a date to be uncertain, then they would need to re-advertise. So is somebody from the Stone Ridge comments on the phone right now or on the Zoom call right now?
Yes, Amy Bombardieri is going to be able to speak.
Okay.
Michelle, do they also have to re-notice the neighbors or just do the advertising?
Yeah, they would have to re-notice if they're not, if we haven't, if we're setting it for a date uncertain. Amy, are you there? Oh, she's muted still.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Amy.
Good evening.
Um, so Amy, when do you, I don't know where you guys are at right now. I know that you've been working on, on sort of addressing, they're still pulling together information that was discussed at the last public hearing to try to address some of the concerns of the public. And I know that you've been, you're still working on that. When do you think you might be ready to be back in front of the, the public?
I think the February 16th meeting would be good. We're waiting on feedback from the DOT on the sidewalk. We need comments back from CPL on the SWIP and we have revised architectural plans coming. So the DOT has been communicative about the sidewalk. They just haven't given me a determination. The school has decided they want the, this bus stop at the cul-de-sac on the existing subdivision. And I think that that's all that's outstanding.
So you would need to submit everything to us by the end of the month, you know, which is, which is fast approaching. So you think you would have whatever information you're still waiting for by the end of the month?
Well, the SWIP was revised and resubmitted on January 9th and then there was a full submission on November 16th. So any information we're waiting on is just correspondence from the DOT. So depending on how the SWIP comments look, I think we would be able to get it back to you by the end of the month.
I'll check into that, Amy. We probably haven't really gotten to that yet if you just made the submission on the 9th, but I'll check into that tomorrow.
Okay, thanks, Pete. We, we had change on the SWIP was the soil tests were done and
Right.
the rates were a little bit different. I rerouted some of the drainage, but we're still using the same practices in the same locations.
Now, were there updated plans with that too, Amy? Or you said you submitted those in November?
There's updated plans that went with the SWIP as far as drainage. I can submit a full set.
No, well, I mean, I'm not, I just want, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're reviewing what we're supposed to review. That's all.
You are, you did. I'll double check. I'll make sure you get the full set, the most recent if that's necessary.
Amy?
Yeah.
When I read the email exchange, it seemed like DOT was looking for a plan for that sidewalk to J, but I didn't see that one had been submitted. So did you in fact submit to DOT a plan for the sidewalk to J?
The sidewalk that I submitted, the plan with the sidewalk I submitted is just a sidewalk on our property. We don't know if there's room. That's what they're supposed to get back to me on. If they have room in the right of way. We don't know if there's room. That's what they're supposed to get back to me on. If they have room in the right of way. To put the sidewalk.
That's not how I interpreted the exchange. I interpreted, and maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, Pete or Brendan, if you looked at that email exchange, it seemed as though when the subject was brought up, they said, okay, send us a plan. And I don't know, I don't see that anything was sent to them. So I think, so we don't waste our time at the next meeting, we need to get to the bottom of that.
Well, Scott, we don't have any survey all the way down the road. So how will we put up, I don't know how we would develop a sidewalk in the right of way if we don't have any mapping.
Paul, I'm basing it on Amy is about the email exchange that I read.
Okay, well, I sent them a revised plan showing our sidewalk, the entire length of the frontage on 52. And they have to do research on their their property.
No, but the email, if I'm not mistaken, someone else, correct me if I'm wrong, but the email asked the question about the sidewalk to J, and their response was send us a plan.
So the question, the question, Scott, was do you have room in your right of way for us to put a sidewalk on either side of the road? So the plan I have, I don't have a plan all the way down 52 to the to J. And the town, the board had asked that either side of the road be investigated. So we, we don't have the information to create that. They have to come back at us and say, we either do have the property or we don't.
Well, I don't think that's revealed in that email exchange. Brendan, have you read that email exchange?
Uh, Scott, I did not actually find that email exchange. I I found, I think, the older one that just indicated that the sidewalk was on the frontage, or at least I didn't see it all. I know in a discussion that we had with Lance Gorney, you know, maybe a couple of weeks ago, I, you know, it it did seem, it did seem to me that they were waiting for something, that they were certainly willing to review the potential of a sidewalk, but it it did, you know, is my, my belief is the same as yours, that they were, they were at least waiting for something in terms of where it would be located or what, you know, what the shoulder and sidewalk widths would be, would be proposed and things like that. Amy, is it possible just to do some, you know, like, uh, you know, some schematic plan, even if it's on, you know, Google mapping or something, just to make sure that they have what they need? I mean, we can, you know, we can assist and help and check in with um, with Lance and his guys. But I do believe that, you know, at least our experience as of late, with the D O T still like only spending about 25% of their time in the office, things are not happening quickly. So if you have, if you don't have a response from them now, I I don't think it would be wise to anticipate that you're gonna get one in the next week and a half. I think, I think it might take longer than that.
I I. How do we put the next? I can provide something on Google. What? Sorry. Go ahead.
We can put the next public hearing for March 9th then, because that'll give enough cushion and then we'd probably be able to go forward with it.
Okay, and I'll get, I will prepare something with Google Maps, but I, I mean, I try and verify that that's what they're looking for.
Amy, I'll reach out to Lance Gorney also and see what I could do to help that process, okay?
Yep, thank you.
Peter, are you there?
Yeah.
Did you relay to Amy about the pump station?
No, what about it? I don't even, I don't know what you're talking about. Sorry.
Oh, sure you do. Uh, we talked that their, that their gravity sewer, they're showing gravity, but they gotta have a pump station.
We have a pump station. We're showing gravity. There's been revised plans submitted, Scott, on November.
All right, well, I'll have to go look for those plans, Amy. You know, maybe with the holidays, just things got, you know, crossed up or something, but.
So we're showing gravity to the pump station? And then pumping across?
No, the plan I just looked at, I had like, uh, gravity at like 4% or something crossing Route 52. So we must have a disconnect on the plans.
What's the date on those plans?
Do not have them in front of me. I'm on my phone in my office.
Okay, I'll double check tomorrow, Scott. I'll get you the right stuff.
Okay.
Okay, so Amy, you think you could, um, March 10?
I, yes, I definitely think we have everything for March. What do you, you think, Pete, we have SWIP comments by then, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah, yeah.
Michelle, that's March 9th, right? It's an early meeting in March.
Yeah, it's an early meeting in March.
So it's probably by mid-February, we'd need everything?
Yeah.
And does adjourning the, does adjourning this require a motion?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing until the date of March 9th, 2021?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, passes. Thank you, Amy.
Thanks.
You.
Have a good night.
Good night. Okay, um, Tucker subdivision discussion.
So I'll just give a little quick summary. Yeah, it's on Stormville Road, it's a parcel that's about approximately six acres. And they would like to subdivide it into four residential lots. And each lot will have greater than one acre, so it'll be the one acre zoning. There will also be a single flag lot proposed towards the northern end of the project site. And do we have the applicant on for Tucker subdivision or the professional?
Hey, Michelle, which end of Stormville Road is that on? Is it, is that near 216 or down towards Biken Hall Road?
Well, let's see if the person can come on and pull up the maps to show you. Is anybody here?
If anybody's here with a project, please hit, raise your hand.
Rich Rania should be there. He should be representing it, the engineer.
He's here.
He's muted at the moment, right?
There we go.
Okay, Rich, are you able to speak?
Okay, I'm on.
Hi, Rich, do you have the plans to share?
Uh, I did not have those ready, but.
I can, I can, I can bring them up.
I can pull it up.
Everyone see that?
Yes. Okay. Is Rich still with us?
Yes.
Okay. Rich, do you want us?
As Michelle had mentioned, it's just under a six acre lot. So we were looking to for a comfortable way to create a subdivision here. And looking at it, it kind of works out that a four lot subdivision seems to work out nicely. All the lots come in much greater than the minimum one acre. I think our smallest lot is 1.2 acres and then our largest lot, which is lot number four, all the way to the right on the screen that you're looking at, that's 1.65 acres. And what, I guess what I'm looking for tonight is to, this is a preliminary plat. We have some more engineering to do, but to get a general consensus or general feedback, our next step would be to go ahead and schedule our soil testing with the health department and be able to figure things out with a little bit more detail. And look at some of the disturbance areas with a little bit more detail. I think Pete had pointed that out in his comment letter.
And Rich, can you address Ed Miyoshi's comment or question about what the closest cross street is?
Oh, they, uh, this is not too far from the Teconic. When you're looking at the map, but it's right across the street from the golf course. So if you, if you pull up the map, almost across the street is the golf course. That's, that's probably the biggest, the the key landmark to find.
Well, if I'm looking at this vicinity map, I'm looking at this Y here. To me, that looks like the intersection of Stormville Road and Biken Hall Road.
Yeah, I think you are, yes, you are definitely correct here. I actually.
Okay, so it's, so it's the field, it's the field across from the house with the pond down there, then?
Yes, yes, 100%.
Okay, got it, got it.
Uh, I, you know, I, I reviewed the preliminary subdivision plat and the subdivision is in accordance with zoning.
Okay.
Yeah, we took a look at it also. We don't really have, um, too many, you know, comments. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. And I guess that, you know, the biggest thing was that the limit of disturbance lines were kind of tight to the, you know, the houses didn't really provide much of a lawn area. So I know that Rich had mentioned that. That's one thing he's gonna go look at. And then he'll have to get together with the highway superintendent and just, I don't, I don't think there's an issue with the driveway entrances. But again, he'll have to get together with the highway superintendent on that. But other than that, it seems like it's fairly straightforward.
Excellent.
No wetlands or anything like that?
No.
No, no.
And no dwellings.
When you drive by, it's, it's a mowed lot, so you can see the majority of the property in the right hand side, you can see the tree line. So if you were to take a drive by, you can basically see almost the entire lot.
Yeah, it's basically an open field with it sloping down a hill there.
And no dwellings on it whatsoever right now.
No, no.
Any other questions by board members? Any questions for us, Rich?
Uh, no, no, I think I I'm giving the feedback that I was looking for. I think it makes sense. You know, if there's no other feedback and if everybody's happy with the, the way that we created the lots and the, the sample of the driveways and that sort of thing. I I think what we need to do next is to go out and do our soil testing and, and get the, get more detail on the map and be able to come back with that additional detail. In the meantime, I don't know if there's any procedural items that we could do to keep this moving forward.
I do think the board can circulate its noticement tentatively lead agency under SEACRA.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can declare, and then, um, you know, I guess the next step after that, once he's resubmitted, then we would consider, probably at the next meeting for, assuming, um, everything looks good, we could consider scheduling for a public hearing.
Okay, great.
So we need to have a motion to declare lead agency under SEACRA? Is that correct?
We're not declaring lead agent, we're actually declaring our intent to be lead agent.
Okay, got it. Then I have a motion to that extent.
Agreed.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So it passes. Thank you, Rich.
Okay, thank you very much.
We'll see you soon.
Take care.
So the next item on the agenda, Moro Crane.
And I know, um, the applicant's professional is here and has a presentation for us. But just by way of introduction, Moro Crane was before the board, I think, back in 2018. They ran into, I believe, some wetland and threatening endangered species, specifically turtle issues out of the property. And I think they've been working to address those issues ever since. There, they also, I think in 2018, received an interpretation from the zoning board on a couple of the zoning issues that had come up specifically related to the cranes and, and whether or not the cranes themselves, because they, they are taller than the height limit in the zoning district, whether or not the cranes themselves would be considered actual structures or are not, or just equipment. And I believe, and Michael, and you can keep me honest here, that the zoning board made the interpretation that the equipment were, that it was equipment and not a structure.
That's correct.
Okay.
So Terry, I know you have a presentation. If you want to pull it up on your screen.
Yep, that'd be great. Also with us this evening is Richard O'Rourke, the project attorney. I don't know if Peter Jaren and Jim Coatri have hit their, raised their hands, so you can identify them as well. They're from Moro.
They're being promoted to panelists now.
Thank you. All right. Rick, did you want to start?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rick O'Rourke. I'm with the law firm of Keenan Bean. We serve as counsel for Moro Equipment. And I just wanted to note that, and I think joining us is Peter Duran, Duran, who is the president and chief operating officer. He's probably out in Salem, Oregon, may, may still be light out there. Also Jim Coatri, who's the facility and project manager. Terry Han is going to take you through a, a deck that will explain with detail everything that we're proposing. And I think Ray Van Doris may be joining us shortly. If, just one clarification, insofar as what happened with the determination by the zoning board of appeals, what was at issue was one crane, which is a very essential component to the, to the operation of Moro Equipment. Moro has offices in the United States, in Canada, in Mexico, and is one of the leading crane companies that lends out, rents out its equipment to construction of high-rise buildings. And you probably have seen them all over New York City. With that, what we would propose to do is turn it over to Peter as the president and chief operating officer to give you an overview of what the operation is. Thereafter, Terry will take you through our PowerPoint presentation. And hopefully, we will answer many of the questions you may have about the operation. And we'll take it from there. So with that, Peter, are you available and online?
I'm here. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, my name is, my name is Peter Jern. I'm the president and COO of Moro Equipment. And I've been with the company 40 years. And just for a little background, I'm very familiar with the Westchester, Putnam, Dutchess area. I grew up in Mount Kisco, went to Fox Lane, so I'm very familiar with the area. And I still have a lot of friends and family back in New York, so. Um, our company Moro started in 1968 by two brothers. And we've grown to be the largest tower crane supplier in North America. Our current facility right now is in Millwood, New York, and we have outgrown that. And we feel that the area where we're looking on Lime Creek Road is, is perfect for our operations. It's easy highway access and the layout of the land is just about ideal for what we do. What the facility does is we store cranes and we service them in between jobs. Our projects typically run seven to 12 months. So we don't, we're not like a taxi crane service where cranes go in and out every day. They're typically shipped in and out. Our typical trucking, maybe one to two trucks a day. If a complete crankum's in, it could be 10 to 12 trucks, but that's usually very rare. If that does happen, it's usually about once a month. We're gonna have, in that facility, approximately 20 to 25 employees. Our average, in our average wage of all those employees is about $65,000 each. We have several high, high skilled employees that are north of $100,000 a year. And one of the things that we also bring that we always do when we move in in local areas is we'll spend somewhere between 1.5 and 1.8 million dollars in local investments for supplies, materials. We like to buy local from the vendors that are in the area that we're at. As far as our operations, we usually run 7:30 to 4:30. We don't light up our storage areas at night. We do probably have some downlighting around the building for security purposes. But in a nutshell, that's what we're looking to do with our facility here. And going forward, Terry and will bring you up to speed on our layout, our proposals, where we are today. And, you know, we'd like to be good neighbors and. And um, you know, we'd like to be good neighbors and we'd like to be in there as soon as we possibly can. Can I answer any questions for anybody before we go? Okay, Terry, you're on.
Right. Thank you. My name is Terry Han. Um, I'm the principal of LEDAPC Land Planners, where the site plan is for the project. Um, the project, as it's mentioned, is twenty-five point nine six acres. It's Zoned I one. Uh, you can see on the location plan uh that it is located just south of eighty-four. Um, it's on the eastern side of Lime Kiln Road. Um, and it is basically across the or immediately adjacent to the commuter lot and across the street from the DOT garage. Um, couple of things, we were um in front of this board sometime around uh two thousand and eighteen, early two thousand and nineteen. And we've been busy since then. Um, a- and just to bring you up to date, uh some of it has been mentioned. Michelle mentioned some of it, but just in particulars. There was a clarification, we couldn't quite figure out how to identify ourselves because um Winchester eighty-four, uh the the property owner actually owns two parcels, one across the street from each other on Lime Kiln Road. And so uh they both shared the same lot number. Uh, so there was a clarification of lot numbers. The the assessor actually gave this property its own lot identification, so we were able to show this as separate from the other property across the street. It is the property across the street that actually has the bog turtles on it. So that's um an important consideration uh as we get into shortly. Um, in addition, uh we have gotten the Army Corps jurisdiction of the wetlands um on the property uh so that we know we've had our our wetland determination. In doing that, um we also uh started talking with the DEC and US Fish and Wildlife because of the bog turtles that have been identified on the other side of Lime Kiln Road. The that particular condition, um originally, both of the wetlands on the site were identified just as Army Corps. Um, but because of the uh area that we call Wetland A, um is connected by a pipes underneath Lime Kiln Road. The DEC decided that um they also would take jurisdiction of that wetland as well as extending a three hundred foot, what they call bog turtle zone two um onto the property. In those discussions, we looked at a couple of different scenarios as to how uh we might go about using the property and sharing it with the bog turtles. Um, you should know that um the actual habitat investigation on this property indicated that there were no actual bog turtles on the site. Um, but in our discussions with the DEC, that was as far as they were concerned, there could be the possibility of bog turtles in the future. And so therefore, um they um took over the 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 jurisdiction on that particular wetland. Um, one of the things that we have been spending some time on is they, our original application had this uh septic system located in the area of of good se- um good, really good soils, but it was within the three hundred foot zone. And so they asked us to do some testing, preliminary testing, to see if we could move the septic system. We have done that, and we do have a new area for our septic system, which is a little bit out of the way based on some preliminary testing. So we have been able to follow up on that. Obviously, we can't really go too much further in our discussions with the DEC until we complete uh SEACRA. Um, there was also um some a phase-two evaluation shovel testing and and excavation investigation with New York Parks Recreation Historic Preservation. Um, there had been a potential uh for there to be um archaeological artifacts that ends up not being the case. And we do have a sign off from Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation. So where are and what what is this property about? Um, as I said, this is located on Lime Kiln Road. Um, there is an existing, what is called a contractor's recycling yard. Basically, the town's brush collection and chipping um is located in the front um of the property um as which is shown in in the sort of bluish-purple area. You can see that the commuter lot is located on the upper portion of the map um on Lime Kiln Road, opposite the DOT garage. The bog turtle area is, as I said, across the street on the western side of Lime Kiln Road, not where where Lime Pool Road is. It's actually uh further in the middle of that property. The rest of the property consists of um an existing cornfield, um as well as uh we have wet- wetland area A and wetland area B, um which is shown in green. Uh, and the bog turtle zone, uh you can see that three hundred foot line shown on the map. One of the things uh that we've been trying to do at at the DEC's request is that any use that is within the one hundred foot DEC buffer, um they wanna um make sure that the especially the existing contractor's recycling yard would be taken out of that and that there more area around the wetland itself, as much as as we can do, would be reclaimed from that previous use into essentially meadow. There is the existing access drive currently goes through the buffer area. Um, you can see the gold um line kind of in the middle of the site there. That's the existing access that goes to the cornfield. So that road, we would reconfigure out of the buffer area so that we would limit um any disturbance within the buffer itself. Our proposed project um is twenty-six thousand square feet of building. Um, it is a classified as a contractor's yard, so which it would be a permitted use. The current um contractor's recycling yard is also a permitted use. Um, then we would use the existing entry on Lime Kiln Road and um work our way back uh through to the back of the site, to the cornfield portion of the site and locate the building back there. The area uh of the drive and around the building would be um a paved surface. And then the storage yard uh which wraps around the backside of the building um would be a loose stone material for for to be pervious. The zoning regulations would require that we have forty-three parking spaces. We don't need forty-three parking spaces. So we're proposing twenty-four spaces with nineteen spaces being deferred. There would be an onsite sanitary um sewage disposal area, which is located in the upper right-hand corner of the site um that um would serve the um area. Our best soils are actually located in what we're calling the sheep meadow um based on our discussion with the DEC. And that that's the area that they asked us to move the septic system out of to the other side of the site. To have an individual drilled well, um with only twenty-five people, we have a relatively small sanitary system and um water requirements. Our stormwater would meet current DEC requirements. Um, the current proposal is a combination of porous pavement and underground detention infiltration um that would be um in the storage area. The site will require two variants, our proposal will require two variances, one for the middle portion of the the building itself, um which uh is um for forty-two feet high. Uh, and also for, um you recently had a new regulation change that changes the height of material tiles within the the uh storage area. Uh, it have a limit of ten feet, but you can get a a variance for greater than that. In this particular case, uh we'd be looking to stack the train, the crane parts on top of one another and to go up to approximately thirty feet. Otherwise, the site meets all the current zoning requirements. Um, we do need, um, we will have wetland buffer disturbance within the DEC portion of Wetland A, uh you know, the buffer area there, as well as the um small portion in Wet- and Wetland B. Uh, and most of that is for reclamation of existing uses um back into meadow. Um, and then, but there is no wetland disturbance proposed at all. Just get a sense of orientation and scale here. Um, the bu- the closest portion of the building is over seven hundred eighty feet from Lime Kill Road. It's about twelve hundred linear feet um along the driveway to get to the building. Um, the building is two hundred and eighty feet from um our northern property line. And the um yard crane rails are over a hundred eighty feet from that closest property line. Just so you get sense of how far back this is. Just to extra copy, in case anybody had any questions, we'll, we can come back to that. So the the yard crane, which we started talking about, um is located behind the building. Um, it lifts crane parts um off of the trucks um and picks them up and puts them into the storage yard, picks them up from the storage yard, puts them on on like a trolley, uh which gets brought into the building. And inside the building, there is a additional crane um up near the roof level, which is why we need that extra that extra height to forty-two feet that picks up those crane parts, brings them into the building um for um evaluation and maintenance and then puts them back out into the storage area until they then get put onto trucks and get taken away. The cranes are not assembled on-site, they are assembled on the construction sites. So the only yard crane um that would be there would be the one that is in the area that I've circled on this image. Yard crane itself is um electric um and is um made out of, uh you know, it's just uh the the structural part has um uh some weight attached to it, but the the rest of the element is uh empty. It doesn't, it's not solid, so that you can see, you can see through the crane. Uh, so it does not, it's doesn't read as a solid entity. And this is consistent with what we had previously presented to both the planning boards when we first came here, as well as the zoning board. Um, this was the uh an excerpt from the ZBA determination, um which has already been discussed. So I don't need to go through this, but that that was a determination that the yard crane itself is considered equipment and not subject to height limitations. The proposed building, um you can see uh has a middle section that's a little higher. That's what I was talking about, the the crane inside uh in that particular area, um picks up the parts and then brings them into the main portion of the building uh to be evaluated and maintained. Uh, so that you can see, it'd be a combination of grays and the Morrow blue. Um, the front portion is the office section, and then the back is the the working portion of the yard. This is the next portion of the um image for the other elevations. Couple of uh renderings, just the the blue arrow highlights the high part of the bay. Combination of colors. Matches the Morrow um logo. We do have a number of approvals that are required. Uh, this board has already um begun SEACRA so that that uh distribution has occurred, and we're just waiting for the r- replies from the various different agencies which are due for February tenth. We're uh have also been to refer to the ARB, and we're in the process of getting that application together, hopefully in time for their February first meeting. Obviously, we need the the two variances. Uh, we need approval from the health department for the septic system and the well. We have stormwater approvals, um the site plan approval, um wetland buffer disturbance um permits and approvals. And then, of course, the bog turtle, what they call a bog turtle taking permit, uh which is um an official term by the DEC and US Fish and Wildlife. We have received a preliminary letter from CPL. Um, and I can just um respond to some of these uh things. Obviously, we will redo a formal submission. We had previously uh submitted an update um in December. And I I don't think that um that has been reviewed yet, which is fine. Um, it'll answer some of the questions. One of the questions came up about that the survey uh originally was called a subdivision map. Uh, that was a byproduct of that question that I talked about at the beginning of the um uh presentation regarding our lot identification. Uh, we do have an update from CHAZEN, so that calls it calls it appropriately an existing conditions map. We can modify the EAF, um the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. Uh, the utility plan is now available. We do have drainage calculations, and we're just putting that together so we show compliance with New York State DEC, um including an erosion control plan. Um, we do mention about the hundred and forty-foot uh yard crane, uh so that we can talk about that shortly. The project description talks about a closed-loop of water uh system, uh for, you know, for equipment washing. It is inside the building. It is completely self-contained inside the building. It does not discharge uh surface or to the septic system. Uh, it is um completely contained within the building.
Yeah, that was our question. We just, we just, uh, you know, we weren't sure if it was something that uh was was inside or outside, so.
Understood.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, Pete, if I can, if I can just expand on it a little bit, uh the systems we use are almost identical to what you'd find in a car wash. So they, we reclaim all of the water and then um over time, it does accumulate some dirt and grease. And the system actually skims that off, and then we dispose it as hazardous material in our recycle. So, but everything is self-contained, just like a car wash system. That's about the easiest way to explain it.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Um, wetland validation map from the DEC. Uh, I'm following up on that with the CHAZEN. Originally, we did not have DEC uh having jurisdiction to Wetland A. They sort of took it later associated with the the bog turtles. So we have the JD jurisdiction, but I I'll follow up on that question on the DEC. Um, the contractor's recycling yard, I I think I've clarified what that is. That's the town's brush area. At the moment, I think we're the idea of whether or not that can continue. Um, after uh the Morrow occupies the 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 project, we're still sort of working our way through that. I do know that New York State DEC um is going to require that that area, which currently occupies portion of the DEC buffer, um will need to be restricted in size if it does continue.
Okay.
The uh materials planned, that that's just a technical cut and fill will provide all of those things. Same with the the numbers ten and eleven will take care of that.
Yeah, they're easy. They're just, you know, simple.
They're just notes.
Life plane comments, that's fine.
So, so at this point, um I don't have uh any more presentations. So if there's, anybody has any comments, I'd be happy to flip back to a plan uh to be able to answer those.
Uh, I do have a initial question with regards to the permanent uh crane structure that'll be outside the building. Um, I don't see that it was part of the rendering. And it's, you know, that structure is what, like, almost three and a half times the height of the building, right?
Like ten stories?
It's a, it's a hundred and forty-two feet, but we can add that to the rendering.
How tall is the tallest point of your building?
Forty-two feet.
Okay, so you're talking, and well, how tall is the crane?
Forty-two feet.
So magnitude to three?
Three point five, right, isn't it?
So to piggyback off, so this this crane is is always uh lofted up? Or is it like at the end of date, does it get lowered down? Or is it, how does it work out?
No, it it is um always, it always looks like this.
At its maximum height?
That's it, yes.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's on rails. It go- it travels back and forth.
Yeah, no, it's more of the height that I I'm curious about where, how it moves is what's uh, what's around the property? I'm just looking at this thing. I mean, this thing's almost, for lack of a better word, it's like a ten-story building. What's around it that?
Okay.
Visual uh.
Can I, I I'm gonna pull up a different thing, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So interestingly, um there are a number of significant existing vertical elements. There is a cell tower located across the street at the DOT, which is actually higher than what the crane will be. And and there are um it fa- very significant uh utility poles located along this utility corridor here.
You know how tall those are?
Um, the uh, I mean, they're pretty, I know they're pretty tall. I'm familiar with them. I just don't know how, just comparatively. I I I would say um if if they are not higher than the crane, then they may be a hundred and twenty-five feet high. Uh, you know, it's it's um, they 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 recently went through some sort of a a thing where they seem to have gotten higher um than than they were uh last, you know, when we first started this project. But um I I would say they're in the gen- same general vicinity, if not higher. They're not shorter, that I can tell you.
Now, will the crane have like a standout color? I know a lot of times those cranes are like a bright yellow, like a safety color.
Well, it it's funny you should say this because we have gone through um a wide variety of color choices here. Um, and and we're uh my my suggest, we've, we've looked at like a blue, um, you know, to see so that we set against the sky. Uh, I I think Uh I I think um one of the things that um uh. I think we all sort of came to the conclusion it wasn't, yellow was not the right choice. Uh but what the actual good choice is, uh we looked at a green, we looked at a blue, uh you know, depending on the weather. Um it, you know, you you sooner or later, you'll see it against the sky, but uh there's no perfect color here.
Yeah, so also I'm saying for the purpose of their use, it doesn't have to be a specific color, like to conform to anything.
It it does, it does. It does not, and we are more than willing to work with the planning board in terms of uh a solution to the the color choice. We don't want yellow and we don't want polka dots and nor do you, so uh we wanna work with you on that, so.
Yeah, I mean, I just was thinking if it was something that we could all agree on that would blend to some degree rather than standing out.
Sure.
You know, obviously, we don't wanna prohibit prohibit the operation of of your uh your site. But I think that's a pretty significant uh structure and we'd have to see how it would blend with the. And we do, I understand the utility poles and stuff like that, but something like that's a much different structure. Because as high as it is, it equally kind of comes out, you know, vertically uh and then horizontally.
Right.
It's electric.
Yes, yes, it runs on electric, it's actually a very quiet machine and there's no emissions whatsoever. And color, whatever, whatever color anybody um would like it to be, we're more than happy to paint it, we um.
Just have to be our. The regular uh cellphone towers, just put those little fake.
Branches off of it.
Just let imagination do the rest. It blends in, that's probably what uh, that's why we didn't know about the other structures, so.
Or maybe you can get rent from Verizon. Tower away.
Uh we uh, we prefer to do, we prefer to do our own gig, so.
Can I just ask a clarification on the um, you you mentioned that the, this parcel was land hooked to another parcel. Is this, does this application also include then a subdivision or were they able to split it without having to do a formal subdivision?
It it was, it's my understanding that they were able to split it without doing a formal subdivision, it was because of the um road. Um so so in other words, what it was is just, they they never changed, they never gave it its own lot number. Um you know, in the assessor's office and at the county, so so they, as long as they gave it its own lot number. It it's own, they're they're, they actually have different mortgages on, you know, the whole shebang, it just, it was a lot number problem.
Now, does it have the same owners, would would this?
The the, there is a, the ownership group is um similar on both sides, yes.
And would there be continuity, like at some point in time, do you feel as if this project was successful, that it would carry over to that other lot?
No, the bog, the bog turtle um on that property makes it extremely difficult to do anything with.
Okay.
And I'm sorry if you said this, the the contractor recycling yard that continues on the site or you're discontinuing it?
Well, you know.
It's not ours, so.
Yeah, I I mean, you know, it it's it's a contract with the town, uh we're willing to work with the the um the operator and the town. Um but i- it's, you know, it it makes things a little bit more complicated. But it does provide a a significant service to the residents of East Fishkill. So, you know, let we, let's talk, I think probably we should talk about that uh as a separate entity.
Is there any chance for the property across the street to continue the use for that? Or is it really that limited because of the bog turtle issue?
Although this is, I I I would express a personal opinion rather than a professional opinion. Because I don't have any authority to say anything with respect to that particular property, but based on our conversations with the D E C. Um the use of the contractor's recycling yard on that side of the property is unlikely.
Okay.
They might do it though, who knows?
Yeah.
So in in Terry, I'm I'm sorry, I wanna make sure I'm following you. So you're saying it's a separate conversation about the contractor recycling yard, but it is on this site, right? Right now, it's on the site and your road is not going through it, it's it's bypassing it, right, it's going around it?
That's correct.
That is correct.
That's correct, so you know, it it's, at the moment, we have included that as a, you know, possible use um as part of the property. Uh you know, uh it might not be for a long time, might be a temporary thing, but we we have included that for, it makes it a little more complicated for us. Um but it it is, it is there now. Um so, you know, if if you all decide that it would be better someplace else, then, you know. I I know D E C has some issues, some reservations because it is within the three hundred foot uh zone for the bog turtle, so. Um but you know, we don't wanna be in a position where we're kicking them off. If 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 the, if the board is comfortable.
Does that mean you would put some sort of gate or something across your drive beyond where that would be accessed?
Yeah, I, you know, in the uh, if you look at the site plan, sorry. It's easier if I just do this. If you look at this area here, you know, there's a um a a zone uh along this this area that would be fenced and and protected. And that they could, they could only operate in this area, which is about half as much as what they have right now.
And would they, but they would still access it from your driveway as opposed to from a separate access from the road, right?
Correct, yeah, no, the, we would not be asking for a second curb cut.
Okay, and so would you gate your property up higher past that point? Or you just allow it to happen without needing to gate it?
See, this is the kind of thing where it starts asking all kinds of additional questions. So uh you know, I don't think we've so uh thought that through to this point, we were just sort of waiting to see. You know, what the, what the gauge, the temperature of the board as to whether or not this should really continue here or not.
Okay.
You know, this is, it's really i- in many respects a municipal service and so um, you know, there's a couple issues related to it. And we wanna be good neighbors and we wanna cooperate, but obviously uh D E C is very much concerned about the extent of the area. Because it is intruding into a buffer that is supposed to be there for the bog turtle habit, potential uh bog turtles. There are none there now, so.
If that use would be discontinued, would you utilize that space for your operation? Or would it just end up being blank, unused?
Oh, I I think uh two things, uh we might use it as a staging area, you know, to just for the trucks coming in and out. Uh so we might use a portion of that, but most of it will actually just be habitat um uh area. Uh that that would then uh be managed as part of our um bog turtle taking program.
And we recognize, obviously, if we were to uh to do anything in that area, ultimately, should the uh brush be removed. Uh that would require us to come back to the planning board. But we have no, there's no proposal because this is obviously a subject of discussion.
Um you mentioned that the building height is forty two feet for the inside crane. Uh what's the tallest bay height? I didn't see, it didn't look like you had a two-story bay on the building, but I I didn't know if the scale, maybe I just wasn't recognizing the door height.
Hang on, let me get those elevations back up for you. So the uh this is the office portion in the front, which is shown on the right-hand side of the higher bay. And then the uh shed portion is the lower bay. The garage door part um is not um significantly different, uh regardless of the the height. It has to do with what happens inside the building, so it goes in at a lower level, the crane picks it up and then occupies the vertical space.
Okay.
Did I accurately um describe that, Peter?
Yeah, so some of the pieces that we bring inside, because we do all of our maintenance work inside the building, we don't do it outside of the building. So we bring some of the components in, we have to stand them up to service them. And some of those pieces are thirty to thirty-two feet long, so when we stand them up, we have to have that high eve height to allow us to do that inside the building.
Could you uh, can you show on the uh, on the map uh? How would you get it in at eighty-four?
I'm sorry.
How would you get uh to and from eighty-four from the location? Do you have a topograph?
Yeah, yes.
Hang on, that's back on that.
These things are usually moved with what, like a fifty-two, three-foot, fifty-two-foot like a rig?
Yeah, tractor trailers, yes.
So this is, this is eighty-four, so you you're right at Limekill, so you're just coming in and then into the building, this way.
Okay, all right, perfect, that's.
Very simple, yeah.
Other, this is uh Brendan, the traffic engineer, are there, are there trucks, uh the trucks, uh any of them oversized, require special permitting?
Rarely, once in a while, we um, we have a a one, one or two components that sometimes. But it's only because they're wide, it's not because they're long. And they're usually about ten foot six wide, so they're about two feet wider than a standard load.
Well, that was my next question. On yourself uh and seeing like with your traffic flow that you're gonna have these uh semis like waiting to get in. Cause you mentioned the staging area, but if let's, how does the timing work? Are you gonna have?
So it it, Terry, can you go back to um the overview of the um facility itself?
There's very little truck, the truck traffic.
So we do, what we do when we bring, we do bring trucks in. Um. Let's see, that one's good right there, Terry.
Yeah.
So what we do is, we bring trucks in the driveway.
Okay.
And then we circle the building with the trucks.
Well, it's probably gonna go this way, right?
Yes, exactly. So, and what we'll, what we do is right where Terry has her cursor, this area back in here. We usually put about two or three slots for trucks to stage where they can sit.
Uh kind of like a white warehouse setup.
Exactly, so we don't, we don't have, we we will not have any truck traffic sitting on Limekill Road. That's one of the other advantages, the long driveway we have here, but we would never have that many trucks for that to ever be an issue.
Okay.
One, one other related comment I have is, um I I do not believe that Limekill Road in this area is is lit. I don't think there's any uh street lighting. I I do know that you have proposed lighting along your access driveway. Um I I think we might ask you to look a little bit at the lighting levels at the intersection of Limekill Road. Um because I I think there could be an expectation that there would be trucks uh entering or exiting during non-daylight hours. At some point in time, uh and since these would be large trucks and slow-moving, uh I think we we need, we we would look to have good visibility. Of them coming in and out of the site, um if in fact it was during non-daylight hours. So I think um maybe repositioning or adding another light on your driveway that would provide some illumination uh on Limekill Road. Would would be uh advantageous.
Uh that would, that is easily accomplished, um you know, a lot of times uh towns don't want us to light their road. Uh so uh that is a simp, that's a simple matter that we can easily solve, not a problem.
Terry, um will the, will the crane have any lights on it at all, the one that's a hundred and forty-two feet in the air?
Yes, it will have, it will have downward lighting that's on there. Because starting at seven thirty and ending at four thirty, obviously in the winter time, if we're in the, if we're in the pot. But those lights can be turned on and off with the crane itself, so when we shut the crane out at night, those lights will go off.
Okay.
Do you have to have um, you know, um an FAA light on the top of this, Peter?
Uh no, the uh the FAA determination is that we're not in a flight glide path and we're not high enough to um meet the restrictions. Because of the power lines that are right in that area, we did an FAA review, which we do with every tower crane, no, we don't have to have that.
Thank you.
I I I do know that the power companies do run helicopters along there to check the lines. I just wanna make sure that that's not gonna be uh in in impact there with with that lighting. I know I asked that question when you guys were here originally and uh I I don't think there's an issue, but it may as well address it again.
Yeah, well, you know, we can do is, we can ask the power company and see what the elevation is there. Usually their helicopters are flying above them, but we'll definitely ask, we can ask that question, Terry, and find out. Jim, yeah, well, I'll have Jim Cotry, our facilities.
I mean, you you also have helicopters for life flights and things like that, so it may just be worth the question generally, whether um may not be for planes. But maybe for smaller uh craft.
Yeah, I mean, we can do it, it, we typically do that in a lot of our facilities um in in certain areas. Even though it's not required, we can still do it. If if the planning board and the neighbors don't mind having, you know, the red lights, um we don't have a problem doing it at all.
Okay. With the, when when you refer to the maintenance, I just wanted to confirm, I think you answered this last time you were here. But there's, do you store any um like paints to paint any equipment or any chemicals? As you're doing your maintenance or anything like that, the hazardous chemicals we need to be aware of or we need to document?
The uh the paints that we use, we use a a L V O C, which is a low volatile content paint. Um which is is very, i- it's basically the filters that we use in our paint system. Because it, the the low quantity of of that, we can actually throw those in a dumpster. And most of them, most of the chemicals we use are mostly oils and solvents. And we have uh waste containment systems in our facility. So all of our containers that sit on there, if we do have a leak, they're contained. And then we have uh companies that come and and take our stuff away, we don't use anything that's caustic. Uh we don't use anything um that's that's any more dangerous than motor oil or gear oil.
Okay.
And there are no, there are no floor drains within the building so that they don't, they can't get to a stormwater system or to the septic system?
No, the only draining system we have is in our wash and reclamation system.
Which is self-contained.
Yes.
Zero discharge is a a good term for the, for our wash reclaim system, zero discharge.
These uh, the cranes they're gonna be working on, are they diesel or are they uh, they're all of same sort?
They're all electric.
All electric, all right, good, that's really good, actually.
And have you been to the fire advisory board or is it too early for that?
It was too early.
Okay.
So what we're uh, obviously, uh we wanna make sure we answer all the questions that you have. And uh I thought Michelle mentioned earlier that the next zoning board, I mean, the next planning board meeting is on February sixteenth, is that correct?
That is correct.
And we would hope that at that time, you would declare yourself lead agency. And uh and if possible, make a determination of significance. The only other procedural posture move at this point um would be for a referral to the Z B A. We recognize the nature of our variances um are such that no determinations can be made until there's a determination of significance. But you know, that's a procedural step that would uh uh move the application along, so.
So Michelle, we already circulated our notice of intent?
Correct, so at the, at the last meeting in December, they had asked us to um to declare our intent to be lead agency. So they could start the circulation process and get um in front of the the agencies that they need to to deal with sooner. Um so they've, the the project has been circulated at this point. And um you know, after thirty days, typically, um we wait thirty days before we declare ourselves to be lead agency, so we can do that at the next meeting. Um and then um, you know, currently, right now, we can refer them to the Z B A for the variance, variances. And um Terry can work with Jackie about getting the applications into the Z B A.
Hey, any other questions by board members or professionals? If not, I'll accept a motion to refer them to the Z B A for the variances.
So.
I'll move.
I can.
I can.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Hey, John.
Pardon me?
When people um, you know, when they're saying, um you know, to, when they're saying yes or no. Could they say, state their names for Julie for the uh record?
Certainly, so.
If they're doing, if they're offering a resolution or, you know, seconding, if they could say their names.
Okay, I've got you, so uh who did make that motion, was that you Ed?
I did and somebody else did at the same time.
We'll, we'll give it to Ed, uh and who made the second?
I believe it was me. Richard.
Richard was second, gave the second?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and we did take the eye votes, are there any opposed? None, so it passed. Thank you, thank you very much, thank you, Terry, Peter?
Thank you, well, so uh we'll see you guys. Thank you. So we'll see you guys next month.
Yep. Thank you for your time and have a good evening, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
See you later.
Okay, the next item on the agenda for discussion, Hopewell Square. You could give us a little run-through on that, Michelle?
Sure. As you may recall, Hopewell Square was in front of us again in December. They're proposing to place a pavilion next to Patsy's Roadhouse for outdoor seating, a more permanent outdoor seating. They currently have a tent out there. The pavilion would be in the location where there's about approximately twelve parking spaces. Those, those twelve parking spaces obviously would no longer exist. So I did a little parking summary and they have, there's plenty of parking out there. Currently, right now, there's thirty-six spaces allotted for the Patsy's Roadhouse, so this would lower that to twenty-four spaces. However, overall, there's ninety-seven spaces out there and a lot of the uses that are in the plaza are off our to the restaurant uses. And so there's plenty of parking, in my opinion. And the pavilion, not only are they asking for pavilion, but they're also proposing to put a generator. The generator would be located between the two buildings that are there. And I actually have, I'm gonna pull it up, I scanned it today, the site plan that they submitted, or drawn. Michelle, with regard to the parking, I think their peak hour is different from the peak hour for the office portion, right? So. And the daycare. So I'm pulling up the, just give me a minute here, I'm pulling up the screen so you can kinda share it with everybody. That's, I recall they even had the ability to potentially share parking with the building next door with daycare. Also, actually, I don't know if you remember. We approved land bank parking right here, about five spaces. This is where they're proposing, let me see if I can zoom in a little bit here. This is Patsy's here, they're, they're proposing to put the pavilion here. And I, I don't know if Pat is here tonight, because of igliotti. They have an entrance to the restaurant down here as well as here. And there's parking, you know, all, all back here, these uses are not operating in the evening. Michelle, do they have like a covered walkway or something to get from the pavilion back to the restaurant, or is that completely standalone? Um, it's, it's, there's some, it's covered like to here, and then I don't think to walk in, there's probably an area that's uncovered. I don't believe they intend to cover that, but maybe Pat can clarify that.
Yeah, this is, the, the pavilion area is like downgrade from the upper entrance.
Right. I was just thinking, Richard, for like the food delivery versus patrons coming in, like just to make sure that they had kind of a, a way that everybody was getting.
Yeah.
I, I know, I, I know from eating there over the summer that, you know, the food stuff was handled out of, out of the, the front, in the top. And they were seating people down the stairs to go into where they had the tent. So it was, it was not an issue last summer.
Okay.
And are they talking about like eliminating the, the pavement? And putting like a concrete foundation there, or they're just gonna put the pavilion right on the pavement?
It was my understanding they were gonna put the pavilion right on the pavement.
So would, but would they put, you know, would they be able to secure it with, you know, footings and everything? Or how, did they have like a, a, you know, a engineering for how they're gonna manage the structure itself so it's, you know, safe?
They would have to get a permit for that, a building, building.
They'd have to go to the building department and get a permit to construct it, and at that time, that, that, that would be reviewed. And I, and I do wanna just mention that at the last meeting, we had sent them onto the ARB for, for review, and the, and they did go in front of the ARB and the ARB did grant them approval.
The ARB, what was that, Michelle?
Did grant them approval.
Oh, they did, okay.
Sorry, just, I know that we had discussion about the, the current approach into that, that little parking area. Were, were they gonna do any kind of a, I know they wanted to keep it a little bit, just God forbid something happens, an ambulance could get close.
Right.
Are we doing any kind of bollards system, or are they just looking to do like high-density, like planters or something?
He said, he wasn't planning, yeah. He said he wasn't planning to do any bollards, but they had, they had some sort of separator that was located here.
I think, well, during the summer, didn't they have like a jersey barrier or something?
They have to have something like.
Yeah, they, they have, they have barriers there, they did have.
Yeah, God forbid if a car.
Too, so he can also answer these.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
We can hear you. You can hear me. How you doing? During the summertime, and the same thing I would do here for pavilion is I have these two, there are water-filled barriers called Yodocs. That I put two of them across the things, so no vehicle can enter that area. But yet, you could walk through that area if you had to on an emergency basis.
Yeah, like for an ambulance or something.
Correct. And as far as entering the pavilion, we have about, I think it's a five-and-a-half-foot walkway that goes right around the building and you would enter it right from there. You're not gonna be able to enter this from any other spot than the entrance in the center of the pavilion off the sidewalk, same ways we had the tent.
And that's between the building and the, the pavilion, not on, not from the parking lot side?
That's correct. You cannot enter this from the parking lot side, only from the, between the restaurant and the pavilion itself.
And is the structure gonna just be anchored to the, the pavement, or are they gonna put footings into the ground?
I'm gonna put two-foot, two-foot diameter footings down forty-two inches down with an anchor bolt in there with a special, I don't know the name of it, for the six-by-sixes. That will actually hold the roof trusses themselves, which will be, they're gonna be engineered roof trusses.
Yeah, pre-engineered roof truss. And then what, just like a same roof type as you have on the building and?
Yeah, it'll be shingled on the outside, but the inside, I like to do some nice pine, like it is when you walk into the entrance.
Place.
Yes.
Yeah, very attractive. Sounds good.
I think it's nice to be able to maintain some outdoor dining. Even past COVID. Hopefully, we're past COVID by then, but it'll be nice to still have that, that function. That's great. Michelle, was there, did the state pass a law or something about this? Or was that a temporary order for the outdoor dining? So, so Michael Cunningham knows more about it, but I believe that was a, that was temporary for COVID. So I thi, I believe Pat was hoping to make this more of a permanent structure that would, therefore, he wouldn't have to worry about the tent blowing away and that kind of thing. Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything in the state law that we had to consider for this. I'm, 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 I get that it's permanent, I think that's good.
Not that I know of.
I think it's, it's more like a smokehouse-type structure, right? Right. Nice.
Okay, any other questions, comments? If not, we have a resolution. Is there anything we need to do before that resolution, Michelle?
No.
Okay. Ed, if you could offer the resolution, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, John, this is a resolution of amended site plan approval. The name of the site plan is Hopewell Square, Patsy's Pavilion. Name of applicant, Hopewell Square. Location is one oh five to one oh nine Route three seventy-six. Grid number six four five six dash zero two dash six nine four eight nine five. Resolution is offered by Planning Board member Ed Miyoshi. Whereas the applicant has applied for an amended site plan approval to construct an outdoor pavilion adjacent to Patsy's Roadhouse and install a generator in the courtyard bet, between the two buildings. And whereas the proposed pavilion will be constructed over the parking area located on the south side of Patsy's Roadhouse. And whereas a total of twelve parking spaces will be removed for the installation of the pavilion. Reducing part, parking allocated to Patsy's Roadhouse to twenty-four spaces. And whereas the existing site plan of, approved site plan shows a total of ninety-seven spaces. Plus six handicap spaces and five land bank spaces. And whereas after installation of the pavilion, the site plan will have a total of eighty-five spaces plus six handicap spaces and the five land bank spaces. And whereas after a review of the parking requirements for the plaza, it was determined that sufficient parking exists to accommodate the restaurant and pavilion after the removal of the twelve spaces. And whereas the applicant received ARB approval for the pavilion on January seventh of this year. And whereas the action is considered to be a type-two action under seeker, for which no further seeker review is required. And now, do we have any more whereas's before I go any further?
But we have to then now therefore, it'll be the next paragraph.
Well, I, I just wanted to make sure there were no where, no more whereas's that we wanted to add before I went any further. I'll take that as a no. So now, therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby issues amended site plan approval for the above project as represented on a map entitled Hopewell Square, prepared by BIBBO Associates LLP, dated August thirtieth, twenty sixteen, and last revised April eleventh, twenty seventeen, with handwritten revisions on twelve one twenty, subject to the following conditions. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the plans approved herein shall be updated to show the approved pavilion and generator. And details a specifying a quiet-run generator. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
We have a second.
Second, Richard Campbell.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, the votes. Lori G.
Aye.
John Cutler.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Christopher Tamerlunas.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
John Eichman, I'm an aye. The resolution passes. Thank you very much, Pat.
Thank you very much.
So the next item on the, on the agenda, decisions for this evening, Hopewell Enterprises LLC. Could we have a brief overview, Michelle?
Sure. So Hopewell Enterprises is a six-lot subdivision and a lot line realignment. The six lots that are created are gonna have three shared, it's really shared driveway aprons. And the sixteen-point-three-two-acre lot that's getting subdivided has an extra four-point-one-three acres, which would then be passed to a neighboring or the adjacent property, which is owned by Savelicos, and create, basically, which would be added to that lot, so there would be, I'm calling it a seven lot, but it's really called Lot A in the subdivision plan. And that lot would go from what is now and currently an undersized lot to, I guess it's like about four, four and a half plus acres, about four and a half acres. So the applicant has submitted the subdivision plan. We declared ourselves our intent to be lead agency. We circulated. This was all back, I guess, in the fall, really, and the applicant has been, or the engineer has been preparing the subdivision plans, and right now we're ready to provide preliminary approval. I believe there's a couple of outstanding items that Pete has noted in his memo. So Pete, do you wanna just address some of the outstanding items that you had in your letter?
Uh, sure. You know, Mike has now provided a plat that has meets and bounds for the lots on it. That was probably the biggest thing that we were waiting for before we got to preliminary. So we have that now. In my memo, I detailed a few other items. We'll need to have meets and bounds descriptions for the drainage easements, along with the legal documents that'll have to be reviewed by the attorney. And just, I guess, a couple more details on the infiltration basins that are a part of each lot along the driveways, so. That's about it. So if we're gonna, I, I believe that our memo is a, one, one of the conditions of preliminary. So other than that, I, I think we're in pretty good shape at this point.
There any questions by board members or any other comments? If not, Richard is going to offer the motion for the, a motion for the negative declaration. Is that a correct way to approach that, Michelle?
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna offer the negative declaration, yep.
Okay, and we'll do that with a voice vote? Not a roll call?
Yeah, once, once someone reads it out, then you'll, then you'll take it. You'll just, um, once someone reads the negative declaration, you'll ask if everyone agrees.
Okay. Okay, and then following that, we'll do the resolution of approval. Go ahead, Richard.
So negative declaration, notice of determination of non-significance, date January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This notice is issued pursuant to Part six one seven of the Implementing Regulation pertaining to Article Eight State Environmental Quality Review Act of the Environmental Conservation Law. The Town of East Fishkill Planning Board has determined that the proposed action described below will not have a significant effect on the environment, and a draft of environmental impact statement will not be prepared. Name of action, Hopewell Enterprises, six-lot subdivision and LLR. Description of action, the proposed project would, would result in the subdivision of sixteen-point-zero-two-acre parcel into six lots with three shared driveways with access on County Route twenty-nine, Hillside Lake Road. In addition, four-point-one-three acres of the parcel would be transferred and combined with an adjacent zero-point-three-four-acre parcel, creating a new, new four-point-four-seven-acre parcel. Seeker status, type one. Condition, negative declaration. Unlisted, or negative declaration, yes. Unlisted, X, X, no. Location of action, Hillside Lake Road, County Route twenty-nine, Town of East Fishkill, County of Duchess. Grid numbers, six four five eight dash zero three dash zero nine eight four nine five and six four five eight dash zero three dash zero four zero zero five one. The following documentation was analyzed in making this negative declaration. Long form EAF. Supplemental Part Three Information, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, and other. Name of action, Hopewell Enterprises, six-lot subdivision. For further information, contact person Jackie Keenan, planning or clerk of the planning board, Town Hall, three thirty, Route three seventy-six, Hopewell Junction, New York, one two five three three. Reasons supporting this determination, C six point six one seven point seven. C for requirements of this determination. C six one seven point seven D for condition, negative declaration. The proposed action would be consistent with the R-one zoning and would not be expected to result in any significant changes to land uses or character of the surrounding neighborhood. According to a letter from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, NYSDEC, dated February thirteenth, twenty twenty, the proposed project parcel has the potential to contain habitat for the threatened and endangered Indiana bat. To avoid the potential for impacts to the Indiana bat, and per the NYSDEC guidelines, all tree removal on the site will occur between October first and March thirty-first. Proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant adverse impacts on the Indiana bat. In addition, the proposed project would not be expected to. In addition, the proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant adverse impacts on the environment for the following reasons. One, the proposed subdivision will not generate a significant amount of any additional vehicles, noise, or emissions levels. Two, the proposed subdivision will not result in any impacts to historic or archaeological resources. Number four, the proposed subdivision will not result in any impacts related to hazardous materials. Number five, the proposed subdivision will not result in any significant effect on air, water quality. Or ambient noise levels for adjoining areas. Number six, the proposed subdivision will not result in, in an unacceptable, unacceptable risk of flooding or major geological hazards. Number seven, the proposed subdivision will not have a substantial aesthetic effect. Number eight, the proposed subdivision will not adversely affect any surface water or groundwater. Number nine, the proposed subdivision will not allow for improper uses within specified zoning district. Number ten, the proposed subdivision will not result in adverse cumulative impacts. Number eleven, the proposed subdivision will not result in adverse growth inducing impacts. Number twelve, the proposed subdivision is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. In conclusion, no significant potential impacts were identified as a result of the proposed action. Based on a review of six N Y C R R, six one seven point seven. There appear to be no significant adverse environmental impacts. If condition negative declaration provide on attachment to specific mitigation measures imposed.
So Richard, I think we can take, you can go ahead and vote on whether or not you agree with that, the negative.
Let me a second.
Why don't we have a second? Who would care to second it, Chris?
Second, this is Ed.
Okay, I actually, Chris beat you to it with his hand up. So, all in favor of approving the neg deck, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? It passes. Very good, so.
Thank you, thank you folks.
The resolution of approval.
Resolution of preliminary subdivision approval. Name of site plan, Hopewell Enterprises slash Savelico's. Name of applicant, Hopewell Enterprises LLC. Location, Hillside Lake Road. Grid number, six four five eight dash zero three dash zero nine eight four nine five. And six four five eight dash zero three dash zero four zero zero five one. Resolution offered by planning board member, Richard Campbell. Whereas the applicant has applied for a six lot subdivision of a sixteen point zero-two acre parcel and a lot line realignment to transfer four point one-three acres of the sixteen point zero-two acre parcel to an adjacent zero point three-four acre lot owned by Savelico. And whereas the six new building lots will be accessed by three shared driveways off Hillside Lake Road, a county road. And whereas the planning board held a public hearing on December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen and closed the adjourned public hearing on February eighteenth, twenty twenty. And whereas the action is considered to be an unlisted action under sequer for which the planning board declared their intent to be lead agency on December nineteenth, twenty twenty. And coordinated review was undertaken. And whereas the planning board declared lead agency on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty and adopted a negative declaration for the proposed subdivision and lot line realignment on March sixth, twenty twenty.
That should be January nineteenth, that should be changed to January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
So this, the last March sixth, twenty twenty.
Right.
So January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby issues preliminary subdivision approval for the above project as represented on map entitled Major Subdivision and Lot Line Realignment for Hopewell Enterprises LLC and Savelico. Prepared by M. Gillespie and Associates Consulting Engineers, P L L C dated August seventh, two thousand nineteen. And last revised December first, twenty twenty, subject to the conditions set forth below. Number one, satisfactory, satisfactory resolution of comments in the C P L review letter dated January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Number two, the new Savelico lot should be shown on the subdivision map and land hook added identifying, indicating the transfer of the four acres with before and after acreages. Three, met, meets and bounds descriptions of drainage easement between Lot A and lots number five and six. Number four, review and approval by town attorney of the common driveway and stormwater maintenance agreements. And the drainage easement between Lot six and parcel A. Number five, the existing drainage ditch between lands being dedicated Savelico Farm LLC and lots five and six shall be cleared in its entirety prior to building permits being issued for lots five and six. Number six, the installation of fence on the residential side of the swell to keep people out of the swell. Number seven, a note should be added to the plan that per New York State Department Environmental Conservation, N Y S D E C requirement, site clearing shall not occur between October first and March thirty-first to avoid impacts to the Indiana bat. Eight, a note on the final subdivision plot stating that no residential building permits will be issued for Lot A without planning board review and approvals of said lot. Number nine, satisfactory resolution of comments from Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, D C, D B C H. Letter dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty. Approval from Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, D C, D B C H. Number eleven, driveway approvals in writing from Duchess County Department of Public Works, D C, D P W. Twelve, plot to be finalized in consultation with town engineer, the town planner, and town consultants. Number thirteen, the final plot will, will contain the written approval of the D C H D before it is signed by the chairperson. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Thank you, Richard, do we have a second? Lori G. So the votes are Lori G.
Hi.
John Cutler.
Hi.
Ed Miyoshi.
Hi.
Christopher.
Hi.
Richard Campbell.
Hi.
And John Eichman, I'm an I. Passes, thank you very much.
Hey, great, thank you folks, can you hear me? This is Mike Gillespie again.
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate moving forward with the neg deck as well as preliminary tonight, I mean, that's certainly what we were looking for. I do have a request, and I wanted to run it by the board, the applicant and owner owns the property directly behind this. The golf course. And the, the intent, if you, if you, as mentioned in the neg deck just like most projects are in East Fishkill, we are under the guise of limiting restrictions on tree removal. Okay, because of the Indiana bat. The thought was, is a few of these lots are not being sold, they're actually going to be building homes for themselves and family members and so forth. Specifically lots four, five, and six. We were hoping to request the ability to clear these three lots. Not certainly remove stumps and so forth, just remove trees in order to get that, that process going and make sure we're not up against that deadline at the begin, at the end of March. That access for all equipment would not come from the county road, it would come through the golf course in the back. We would provide a limitation of where that clearing would, would be performed and submit that to the town engineer's office. So it was very clear what was being done, but I guess, you know, we do have that request, I didn't want to interrupt. I didn't want to interrupt the resolution. Because we were on a roll there. But I do specifically ask for that request if the board feels comfortable allowing that.
So Mike, you're just looking to do that in advance of having the final plan sign, you want to do the clearing so you're within, you don't hit the Indiana bat restriction?
Right, just, just lots four, five, and six.
And how many trees are you talking about?
I mean, it's not heavily wooded, but you know, it's woods, and so, I mean, in terms of the septic areas, driveways, homes, stormwater prevention areas, I mean, again, we would outline, we already have it in terms of anticipated disturbance, but we'd make it specific to where we were looking to actually clear the trees. So it was very clear to the town which trees were being removed, it just gives us a jump start. Instead of, you know, being pushed up against the deadline at March.
I mean, would you estimate, are there fifty trees, a hundred trees?
I mean, knowing the vegetation and the amount of woods out there, yeah, I think.
How many acres?
I would say, based upon those three lots, in terms of the anticipated area disturbance, you're probably looking about an acre and a half, two acres. Right, right, yeah, to anticipate how many trees, that's tough to tell, but I can certainly give you an idea in terms of area.
Woods up here, that's a decent amount, I mean, it's not.
Any, any comments?
Any, any concern on your part? And any monitoring or anything we'd have to do? Well, I mean, the only thing I could think of is there are wetlands out there, right? Mike, so, you know, and is it gonna be marked, are you gonna mark your limited disturbance before you start removing the trees?
I, I think the board has done that in the past, and if you feel comfortable, we can do that, the, the, the extent of the wetlands is really the drainage ditch, which is asking to be, you know, trees to be removed prior to dedicate, you know, prior to a final plot anyway, so. Yeah, we could certainly have delineated, so that way it's abundantly clear in a field which trees get removed and which don't, you know.
God, any concern? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You know what, just to be clear, we're talking about strictly just dropping trees, not stumping, right, just strictly dropping trees?
That's it, yeah, no pulling up stumps. You know, I, I would have thought that maybe a concern regarding the access, but again, because the property owner owns the property in the back, it's, it's all gonna come from that direction. You know, we won't need curb cuts and bringing machinery in through Hillside Lake Road.
Do you actually have a road there, Mike, or would you have to cut the road to get in?
There's, when we perform a soil test out there, there's a number of paths throughout the property, just, you know, they're, 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 you know, not stone lined or anything, but you know, there's, there's certainly enough, it's not so heavily wooded, you can't get a machine through there to do the work it needs to do, you know? And the golf course actually resides pretty close to the, the back of the property itself, so. In terms of the open areas, fairways and so forth.
So does this require any formal action on our part, Michelle? Or?
I think you.
Mike?
Yeah, you can definitely.
You would, you would need to approve, you would approve by motion, you would approve that by motion, be part of the minutes, if the board so chooses.
By motion or amend the resolution to add an additional condition for it?
You could do it either way.
Scott, you're totally okay, you're, you're good with that, any monitoring or other conditions you'd want?
Well, everything's going out through the golf course, so, I mean, there is that, that little intermittent streamline that runs through there. You know, perhaps, but again, they're not pulling stump, so.
Right.
No, I mean, we, if you want to put a little clause in there for environmental monitors, kind of keep tabs on it, you know, do something along those lines. Make sure it doesn't get out of control.
Well, I have a suggestion too, why, why don't you ask Mike to prepare, just even, it could be hand drawn, whatever. A tree clearing, you know, plan for those, for those three lots. Showing the areas that they're proposing to clear, so this way once they're staked out in the field, and if the town wanted to go out, you know, and check it, at least they'd have a plan that, you know, was part of the approval.
Yeah, and we don't have, we don't have a problem with that, I think I had offered that initially, so that's, that makes sense.
I didn't hear you, sorry about that.
Yeah.
And then let me just also add, typically we have from the building department a permit for clearing and grading, so that could be incorporated into that permit.
That's fine, I, I think it just become an issue to make it just absolutely clear to the applicant, you know, what, what, what they are doing, and then the town has something to check up against. So again, only tree removal, and we wouldn't be asking for it if we weren't, you know, close to February and then obviously close to March, so.
So is someone able to construct a motion around all of the detail that we've just talked about?
I'm gonna make a motion to amend the resolution. Yeah. Add those conditions. Do you want me to do that, Michelle, or you want? Yeah, no, that would be great, Lori, I'll write it down as you speak. I'm gonna take a stab at it, you guys correct it. I'm, I'll make a motion to amend the resolution to add an additional condition that allows the applicant the ability to clear trees on lots four, five, and six, subject to the removals being performed prior to, is it March thirty-first or April first? March thirty-first. Prior to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and only upon issuance of a permit for this work from the building department. Does that, does that work, Scott, you said you had a permit you would issue, right, it would be part of the, either the cut fill or something like that?
Clearing and grading. And then we'll get.
Okay.
Yeah, and we can get, you know, we can tidy up some, you know, requirements as far as monitoring in that permit.
Okay.
And not allowing them to stump, but just allowing them to cut the trees.
Right.
Maybe a second sentence, then, this work shall be, shall be monitored and subject to the requirements of the building department. And Scott, you'll make sure it's not, doesn't move into anything you're uncomfortable with?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second, Richard Campbell.
Thank you, Richard. We'll vote, we'll call it out, Lori G.
Hi.
John Cutler.
Hi.
Ed Miyoshi.
Hi.
Christopher Tamaronis.
Hi.
Richard Campbell.
Hi.
John Eichman, aye. It passes.
Okay, all right, thank you folks, I appreciate you accommodating us tonight like that, so, thank you.
You're welcome, good night.
Michelle, do you want me to send that to you, or did you catch it? Um, it would be great if you could forward it to me, I, I think I caught most of it, but just in case. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, Elm subdivision.
So the Elm subdivision was also last before us on December eighth. And it's a simple two lot subdivision of a close to three acre lot that has an existing home and an R one zoning district. Lot one is supposed to be one point two-two acres, and lot two is supposed to be one point four-one acres. And I believe we also have a res, there was a public hearing that was opened and closed at the last meeting, and I believe we also have a resolution of approval for the Elm subdivision. Is there applicants professional here to speak on the Elm subdivision?
Jeff is not here today, speaking on behalf of myself.
Okay, great.
Is there anything you'd like to add to that summary, Kyle?
I believe that sums it up, last time you were looking for the C O for the accessory unit. I, I have that C O, I can share that on the screen, or maybe I can email that, or, I don't know if you checked.
Yeah, we confirm that, and we're, we're all set on that, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from board members or professionals? If not, we'll proceed right to the resolution, Chris, could you offer that resolution?
Resolution of final subdivision approval, name subdivision plan, Elm subdivision. Name of applicant, Kyle Elms. Location, two, two, four, Blue Hill Road. Grid number six, four, five, six, dash, zero, four, dash, five, six, six, three, zero, zero, nine. Resolution offered by planning board member Christopher Tamalunas. Whereas the applicant has applied for a two lot subdivision of a two point eight, five, six acre lot with an existing home and an R one zoning district, whereas lot one is proposed to be a one point two two acre, and lot two is proposed to be one point four one acres. Whereas the planning board held and closed the public hearing on December eighth, twenty twenty. Whereas the action is considered a type two action under seeker, for which no further review is required. Whereas the board determines that such final subdivision plan meets the town's requirements for a final subdivision plan approval, subject to the conditions set forth below. Whereas the board determines that such final subdivision plan meets the town's requirements for final subdivision plan approval, subject to the conditions set forth below. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby issues final subdivision approval for the above project as represented on the map entitled Elm subdivision, prepared by Jeffrey A. Uh, P E, consulting engineer dated November seventh, twenty twenty, and last revised December eighteenth, twenty ten, twenty, subject to the following conditions. One, satisfactory resolution of comments in the C P L review letter dated January fourteenth, twenty twenty one. The plat will contain a written approval of the D C H D before it is signed by the chairperson. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of the resolution, the chair or duly authorized planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant slash owner.
So, do we have a second?
Richard Campbell, second.
Richard, thank you. Uh, and we'll vote. Lori G. Lori?
Sorry, aye.
John Cutler.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Christopher Tamalunas.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
John Ikeman, I'm an aye. Passes. Very good. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
And, uh, Project Redtail.
So, as you may recall, this project is a proposed six hundred and twenty nine thousand, one hundred and eighty six square foot warehouse distribution facility. Um, which should be located over three parcels totaling about a hundred and twenty three point eight, eight, six acres on the former, um, I B M West campus. The project, um, will include a thousand employee parking spaces, seven hundred trailer spaces, and a hundred and thirty two loading docks, and I believe, um, the applicant. Evening. Tristan or Rick, who's going to start?
Yes, hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, yes, John DeCola is on the line, um, as well as Trista Kuna with Langen Engineering. Uh, if there are any other questions that, uh, the board members may have, we're prepared to answer them and hopefully move towards the adoption of the resolution.
You want to just give us a brief description of anything that may have changed in the project since the board last thought?
I apologize, Michelle, I could not hear you very well.
I said, do you want to give a little descriptor, just, Trista, want to give a little description of anything that might have changed on the project since the board last thought?
Not really. I, Trista might be able to, uh, suggest some of the minor adjustments, but it's essentially the project that we've been reviewing all along, and certainly it has incorporated uh, many of the, uh, comments and suggestions made by, uh, you as well as the town consultants. And I think that we have moved in the direction of, uh, and have completed a community benefits agreement, which is quite comprehensive and details many of the, uh, benefits that will in order to the benefit of the town, uh, and the commitments that have been made, so. Uh, John, uh, DeCola is present as well, one of the principals. John, is there anything else you wish to add?
Yeah, look, sorry about that. Yes, uh, good evening, everybody. No, I think, I think what, uh, Rick, um, said is, is on target. I think since we've last spoken, or been before the board, um, we have worked closely with, um, uh, Michelle and Scott and the, the, uh, third party consultants to respond to all of the, uh, the comments, and the site plan has, uh, evolved, I think, to a point where, um, it's, it meets or it will address all of those comments. And, uh, I think as the resolution is drafted, it ties everything together, um, fairly tightly so that, uh, the review that has occurred will result in a, then a site plan that, that complies.
So, Michelle, let me ask, are the items in the community benefits agreement incorporated in some way in our resolution? Or should I ask Richard or John to just give us a quick summary of what's in that?
They, they are incorporated. There's a.
Okay.
That's all in our resolution about anything that's been approved by the town board.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Any questions by anybody? If not, we'll go to resolution. Um, Lori G, can you offer the resolution for the project?
Resolution of final site plan approval for Project Redtail. The name of the applicant is Blue Water Property Group, and the location is Route fifty two and Auditorium Drive. The grid numbers end in six oh, two, eight, four, nine, oh, four, and one, nine, oh, five. Resolution is offered by planning board member Lori G. Whereas on August twenty seventh, twenty twenty, an app, an application for an economic redevelopment special permit and site plan approval for Project Redtail was received by the town board, and the town board declared its intent to be lead agency pursuant to seeker. Whereas Project Redtail consists of a warehouse building containing six hundred and twenty nine thousand, one hundred and eighty six square feet, one hundred and thirty two loading docks, one thousand employee and parking, employee parking spaces, and seven hundred and two trailer parking spaces. Other improvements include stormwater management facilities, a retaining wall along the southern and western property boundaries, landscaping, sight lighting, signage, security shacks, and other utility infrastructure. Whereas pursuant to the economic redevelopment special permit, the town board referred to the application to the East Fishkill Planning Board for site plan review. Whereas on October second, twenty twenty, Blue Water Property Group submitted an application for site plan approval to the town of East Fishkill Planning Board for Project Redtail, a proposed warehouse distribution facility on one hundred and twenty three point eight six acres of land, on three lots near I eighty four and the intersection of Line Killen Road, Hyde Park Boulevard, in the town of East Fishkill, identified as tax parcels ending in six oh, two, eight, four, nine, oh, four, and one, nine, oh, five, also called the project site or site hereafter. Whereas on October eighth, twenty twenty, the East Fishkill Town Board declared itself lead agency pursuant to seeker. And whereas the planning board referred to Project Redtail, referred Project Redtail to the A R B on October twenty first, twenty twenty, and received approval from the A R B on November second, twenty twenty. Whereas on November fifth, twenty twenty, the East Fishkill Town Board and Planning Board held a combined public hearing for Project Redtail with regards to the economic redevelopment special permit and site plan. Whereas on November fifth, twenty twenty, the East Fishkill Town Board closed the special permit public hearing, and the planning board adjourned the site plan public hearing to December eighth, twenty twenty. And whereas on December third, twenty twenty, the town board adopted a negative declaration for Project Redtail pursuant to seeker and approved the economic redevelopment special permit. And whereas on December eighth, twenty twenty, the planning board closed the public hearing on the site plan. Whereas the. Sorry. I just flipped my screen too fast, sorry. Um, where did I leave off here? Whereas the planning board has reviewed all submissions made by the applicant and all public and agency comments received during the site plan review process. Whereas the town and its consultants requested revisions in keeping with the town's site plan review standards set forth in the town zoning law and highway specifications. Whereas the town and its consultants have issued their respective comments to be addressed by the applicant. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby conditionally approves the site plan application for Project Redtail, including the final site plans as represented on a map entitled Project Redtail, prepared by Langen Engineering dated October second, twenty twenty, and last revised through December, revised December fifteenth, twenty twenty, together with supplemental pages. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the plans approved herein shall be updated to address the comments set forth in the various town review comment letters provided to the applicant, and the planning board hereby affirmatively finds that the applicant's written responses to those comments letters as listed below satisfactorily address the town's and its consultant's comments. One, Langen's January sixth, twenty twenty one comment response letter addressed C P L site plan and SWIP review letters of December twenty third, twenty twenty. Two, Langen's January sixth, twenty twenty one comment response letter addressed H V E A's site plan review letters of twelve, twenty nine, twenty twenty. Number three, Langen's one fourteen, twenty twenty one comment response letter via email addressed the town planners landscape comments of one, twelve, twenty twenty one. And fourth, Langen's one fifteen, twenty twenty one comment response letter addressed C P L's review memo of one, eleven, twenty twenty one, which was provided as a follow-up to Langen's one, six, twenty twenty one comment letter, comment response letter. Michelle, we're just, we're missing an end parenth in there somewhere. I'm not sure where it was supposed to be. The applicant is hereby bound by any statements offering modifications, improvements, or offerings to the town of East Fishkill made by itself or its representatives in relation to the approval of the proposed project. Be it further resolved that this site plan approval is granted subject to the following conditions and must be satisfied prior to the execution of the final site plans by the planning board chairman. One, satisfactory resolution of comments in C P L letter dated one nineteen, twenty twenty one. Hudson Valley Engineering letter dated one nineteen, twenty twenty one landscaping comments from the town planner sent via email dated one, twelve, twenty twenty one. Two, the project sponsor shall implement and maintain all mitigation measures set forth in the negative declaration pursuant to seeker dated December third, twenty twenty. Three, exec, execution of agreement with Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. Four, establish a ten thousand dollar escrow to be replenished as necessary for an environmental monitor during construction. Five, post a performance security of twenty thousand dollars to fund monitoring for construction maintenance, repair, and completion of the project stormwater control mem, measures, structural inspections, and a construction monitor. The performance security shall be replenished upon notice to the project sponsor by the town, and any remaining escrow funds shall be returned to the project sponsor upon issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the warehouse. Six, payment of all necessary fees to the town. Seven, all tax lots shall be consolidated into one lot. Eight, approval of water and sewer connection from Dutchess County Health Department. The site plan shall contain the written approval of the D C H D before the plan is signed by the chairperson. Nine, the project sponsor, sponsor shall execute a stormwater management facility maintenance easement and agreement, the stormwater easement, for the private stormwater controls on the project site acceptable to the town engineer and town attorney. The easement shall be recorded by the project sponsor at its sole expense in the office of the Dutchess County Clerk. Ten, inclusion in the John Jay Sewer Improvement Area. Eleven, applicant consent to be included in a stormwater district for its, for its share of common off-site maintenance. Twelve, provide third-party compa, compaction testing and certification for all work within proposed future town right-of-way. Thirteen, offer of sess, session of Auditorium Drive. Fourteen, relocation of South Drive. Fifteen, applicant to perform all maintenance for the Dutchess County Loop Bus Stop located within the Auditorium Drive right-of-way to be. Sixteen, all construction to occur Monday through Saturday between the hours of seven A M and five P M unless otherwise authorized by the town. Seventeen, to minimize noise from truck backup alarms, consideration will be given to equipping the switcher engines for all tenant trucks with smart ambient sensing, multi-frequency backup alarms, uh, ambient sensing, multi-frequency backup alarms. This type of alarm is commonly called a shusher alarm due to the type of noise it produces. These devices reduce annoyance generated from constant level pure tones from beeping backup alarms. Eighteen, proof of noise and traffic level consistent with the seeker analysis after one year of facility operation. Non-compliance may require further mitigation as determined by the lead agency. Nineteen, applicant to provide a relocated area consisting of five hundred spaces to accommodate the previously approved East Fishkill Kingdom overflow parking is depicted on the site plan. Twenty, compliance with all requirements of the town board's approval resolutions. And twenty one, final site plan to be submitted and signed by the planning board chair after satisfactory resolution of all comments. Any, any updates? I'm okay to keep going?
I think that'll do it. Go ahead and finish it up.
Okay. Be it further resolved that all subsequent owners and lesses of the project and the project site shall be required to comply with the terms and conditions of this approval resolution. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Thank you, Lori. May I have a second?
Richard Campbell, second.
Thank you, Richard. And the votes, Lori G.
Aye.
John Cutler.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi. Ed? Ed, go.
Sorry, just coming, just coming off mute, so, yes.
Okay, Chris, Christopher Tamalunas.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
John Ikeman, I'm an aye. It passes.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We, uh, are very grateful for the cooperation, collaboration, and I think this is something that you've waited two decades to improve that site, and I know John DeCola is probably going to want to thank you as well.
Yes, I, I think as evident by the recitals, the long recitals, um, we've accomplished much in a very short amount of time, um, you know, from August until now, uh, you know, what those recital show is a, a really constant, um, and great collaboration, uh, I think we've had with the project and with both, uh, this board and, and the town board. Uh, but most definitely wanted, we, we are very appreciative of the efforts of the staff, um, both, uh, Michelle, um, and Scott. Um, who've been intimately, intimately involved and have made many good suggestions, um, to improve the project. And we'd like to thank the third party consultants, both C P L and H V E A. Um, it's been, uh, it's a big project, but I think we've, we all feel really good about the, the level of analysis and review that, that has occurred, and, and we look forward to, um, uh, button, buttoning up, uh, the site plan and, and, uh, getting on the construction, so thank you very much.
I also would like to thank Michael Cunningham and, and Tom Wood for, uh, don't leave the lawyers out, for God's sake, John. You know, we're not just a bunch of pretty faces around here.
My, my apologies.
That's okay, sincerely, thank you, Mike, and thank you, Tom. Uh, you know, it was a, it was a, it was a labor of love for all of us. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Richard, John, and Trista. We, uh, welcome you to the town of East Fishkill, and we look forward to the project.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, have a great night.
Night, thank you.
Okay, last item on the agenda is Zeller subdivision.
Um, so Zeller subdivision is a proposed three lot subdivision on a four point four acre lot, which is in the R one zoning district. Lot one is proposed to be one point three seven acres, lot two is supposed to be one point four four acres, and lot three is proposed to be one point four three acres. As you recall, they were on the, last on the agenda on December eighth. Uh, at that time, we were able to open a, open the public hearing, but we, um, adjourned it because we, um, were waiting information from New York State D O T on the driveway, the driveway approvals, because, um, the driveways access State Route fifty two. Um, is there applicants professional here or the applicant here?
Okay, Michael.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Um, so, good evening, again.
Just one second, um, Michael, I'll let you finish. I just want to just, um, make sure John is aware that the public hearing was adjourned, so we have to reopen the public hearing.
Right. I, I thought I'd give Michael a chance to make a comment, but, uh, we could go ahead and do that right now. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved. Lori G?
Lori G, move?
Second, Ed.
Thank you, Ed. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I'm gonna pull up the plan, so everyone can see them.
So, as Michelle does that, we made a, an updated submittal at the end of the month as well. We provided some correspondence to Cassandra Bibbo, who is the local person we're working with in DOT relative to the driveway entrances. They had some questions relative to serving access to the site through apprentice drive. Unfortunately, you know, we don't have any access to apprentice drive. They also indicated that they preferred, you know, marrying the driveways in terms of minimizing the curb cuts on fifty-two, which we anticipated. So, as kind of a middle of the road, we went ahead and modified the entrance locations for lots two and three to, and we've done this before in other projects at town, and kind of provide a shared driveway apron. And what that does is it minimizes it from three curb cuts down to two. It would be a little awkward to try and get lot one all the way over to that curb cut location. And so, we petitioned the DOT to allow the configuration that you see. One of the other issues that we've been working with is that we had submitted a floodplain permit application to the town. I haven't got response back on that, but I know it came up in Pete CPL's letter for January fourteenth. There is a small portion that mainly comes from across fifty-two of floodplain that exists in the south corner of the property. It was provided on our plan, but it, the line was a little faint. So, you know, we'll go ahead and try and make that a little more, you know, detailed. But we are seeking a floodplain development permit for the driveway for lot number one. We've called out that the driveway should be built to grade, should not be filled. So, you know, we want to alleviate any, any potential impacts, obviously, on filling any of that floodplain with respect to the driveway. On another note, we've, I think we indicated at the last meeting, or maybe the meeting before, we've already proceeded with performing our soil tests out there. Soil was very good for the purposes of sewage disposal, so we've kind of jumped on that a little bit ahead of, of, of time. So, long story short, we're here tonight under, right, in a joined, adjourned public hearing, waiting to see if anybody has any, certainly any comments, and then any comments from the board, and then obviously try, try and move forward. Okay. Are there any questions by board members? Is there anyone from the public here? If, if there's anyone from the public that has anything to say in favor or, or not for the project, raise your hand, and Michael will let you in.
Nobody's raised their hand, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. So, without further ado, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Lori G?
Okay, and, and second by Ed, we'll say.
Sure.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passed. We have a resolution, and Chris, could you offer that resolution?
Sure. Resolution of final subdivision approval. Name of subdivision plan, Zeller subdivision. Name of applicant, Don Zeller. Location, twenty-seven oh three Route fifty-two. Grid number six-five-five-six dash zero-one dash sixteen ninety-nine thirty-two. Resolution offered by Planning Board member Christopher Tammalonis. Whereas applicant has applied for a three-lot subdivision of a four-point-four acre lot in the R-one zoning district. And whereas lot one is proposed to be a one point three-seven acre, lot two is supposed to be one point four acres, and lot three is proposed to be one point four-three acres. And whereas the planning board held a public hearing on December eighth, twenty twenty, and closed the adjourned public hearing on January nineteenth, twenty twenty. And whereas the action is considered a type-two action under seeker, for which no further review is required. And now therefore, let it be resolved that the Planning Board hereby issues final subdivision approval for the above project represented on a map entitled Zeller subdivision, prepared by M. Gallipsy and Associates Consulting Engineers, PLC, dated November nineteenth, twenty twenty, and last received December thirtieth, twenty twenty, subject to the following conditions. Satisfactory resolution of comments in the CPL review letter dated January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Floodplain development permit from the town. New York State Department of Transportation, New York's NYSDOT approval of highways, of driveways. The plat will contain the written approval of the DCHD before it is signed by the chairperson. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair and other duly authorized members of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent with the applicant owner.
And do we have a second?
Second, John.
Thank you very much, John. Votes. Lori G?
Hi.
John Cutler?
Hi.
Ed Miyoshi?
Hi.
Christopher Tammalonis?
Hi, but I'm just wondering if there's a typo of first page. It says December eighth, twenty twenty, and closing adjourned public hearing on January nineteenth. Shouldn't be twenty twenty-one?
Twenty-one. Good catch.
That, that, but I'm, I'm aye still.
That, that'll be corrected, and I assumed all of the votes are still ayes, so I'll continue on. Richard Campbell?
Aye.
And John Aikman, aye. It carries. So, thank you. That completes the meeting.
Again, Michael Lesby here. Can I just chime in real quick? I know everybody's looking to, to wrap it up. I, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I, I have this kind of the same, absolutely the same request as I had on the other project we spoke about relative to, to tree clearing. The, the only issue on this one is we, we do have to show that we have, you know, the DOT access point. There actually was an old home on this property. It's been removed, foundation, and so forth. So, we do have an access point, but, you know, in order to be able to get machines in and out of there, we're, we're gonna have to have, you know, an okay from DOT. So, I, I make that request again. I, I was thinking about it again, jumping in, but, you know, when you're on a roll, I figured I'd leave it alone, but I was, I was hoping the board would consider that as well for this project.
Hey, Mike, do you, are you able to do that without, without going in the floodplain at all? Because you'd need your development permit, right? If, if not.
Yeah, the, the, the access way that's here is actually shown at the point where the shared driveways, or that shared driveway, the shared entrance are coming in, so it's, it's approximately the same location. So, I don't, I don't think we need that floodplain development permit to get in and out of there. You know, as, as a point to, a few years ago, there was some, there was an old home on the property, which was beyond repair. So, there was a permit issued from DOT as understood to go, at least get in there and remove that material. There was a, you know, a stone entrance and so forth. So, kind of the same idea. We would have to, again, prove to the town, we can provide a plan detailing the extents of the removal and so forth. But, you know, just trying to think ahead with this, with this March deadline coming up, which will be here before you know it.
Is it clearing on all three lots, Mike?
It would be, yes.
Unless Scott has any objection, I don't, I don't have an objection. I could offer an amendment to the resolution.
So, this is gonna be subject to them obtaining the DOT permit? Is that correct? Subject to that?
Yes, the resolution was subject to them obtaining DOT approval for the driveway.
Okay.
No, but the clearing, the clearing is gonna be subject to
A temporary access permit.
Correct.
Need a temporary access permit.
Okay.
Okay, and a clearing and grading permit from the building department, right?
Correct, but that'd be subject to them providing the DOT.
Got it.
Correct. Absolutely.
Hey, Mike, I just got a quick question for you. How, how far are you with the county health department?
We, you know, made our submission, waiting on responses. I'm, I'm not concerned that things are gonna move around a whole lot, because again, the soil is pretty pristine out there. So, yeah, that's kind of where we're at.
That was my question, right? Okay.
So, so Lori, um, did you make the motion to amend the resolution?
I, I didn't yet, but yes, I can if you were okay with that.
Yeah, I'd love it if you wish.
Okay. I'll make a motion to amend the resolution to include the ability for the applicant to access the property to perform tree removals prior to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and only upon issuance of both a temporary access permit from the DOT and a clearing and grading permit from the building department. And the work will be subject to the monitoring by the building department and should not include stumping or other, other actions at the property other than clearing the trees. I can clean up that language a little bit, Michelle.
That's fine. That's perfect.
We, we understand the sense of it. It's great. Do we have a second?
I second it. Chris?
Uh, since we, we did a roll call vote, I'll do that for the amendment as well. Lori G?
Hi.
John Cutler?
Hi.
Ed Miyoshi?
Hi.
Christopher Tammalonis?
Hi.
Richard Campbell?
Hi.
John Aikman, aye. It passes. Mr. Glass?
Thank you very much, folks.
You had a good night.
More than I could ask for. Yeah, I, I appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
It's a lot, or it's your night.
That's right.
So, I, I wanna, once again, before we break, I want to, I want to thank Sarah for joining us. And Sarah, it'll be a lot more fun when we let you vote and talk at the next meeting. We'll look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. Is there any other business to be brought before the planning board tonight? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we skipping for it to be Zoom again or be on-site next month? There was a contingent on?
Not sure.
Somewhat contingent on numbers, but I suspect that next meeting will probably be Zoom.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. It's Lori.
Thank you, Lori. Second?
I second. John?
John Cutler, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, buddy.
Good night.
Great night, guys.